Welcome especially Deanna Shaw who brought her husband because it's their wedding anniversary.
Oh, boy.
How many years did you say?
Fifty-five and we're so loud.
And Master Shaw is going to bring the invocation this evening.
Can we bow our heads, please? Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for laughter. Boy, today we need laughter. We sure do, Lord, and we need unity. We pray tonight for unity with whatever's going on tonight with the agenda. But I want to bring honor to the mayor, the council members, the police, the ladies upstairs, the Department of Public Works men, and all the work that these people do to make the city safe. I thank God for these people. And whatever's on the agenda tonight, I ask that everything be done in harmony with each other. And always remember, we're united together in this community. And may we have everything that's done tonight honor glorify you. In Jesus' name, amen.
It is seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, could you take the roll copies?
Here.
Chad Cole.
Here.
Mary Gallope, here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Aaron Shugmanis.
Here.
All is upon form.
Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, moved by Larry, seconded by Steve, to approve the agenda. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Agenda is approved. Moving on to reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was June 2nd.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the June 2nd, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
Motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We move now into our pre-approved reports, presentations, and give the floor to Larry Lambert.
Thank you. It was my honor this month to have the opportunity to select our Perry Pride winners for June and also our Put Your Best Face Forward winner for this month. And I'd like to ask that the residents at 200 South Washington, Dave and Shelley, please, please step forward. They are our Perry Pride Award winners for this month.
Thank you.
Well-maintained house, love the fence, love the landscaping, and it just popped as a really nice residence. And also, we keep a plaque here at City Hall that you folks have been added from the month of June.
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you.
Now let's put your town. Can you get a little bit closer?
Okay.
Cheese.
Cheese. Okay, look at me. And one more time?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. This is so nice.
I might also mention that we had some other folks that drew out of the mention for this month. That was at 313 South Lincoln Street, at Chris McDivitt, at 307 East 2nd Street, Dale and Sharon Richard, and also 519 East 2nd Street, Tim and Teresa Delu. All of those names came from that section of town. For those that don't know, each month, we have a different section of our community that gets the opportunity to receive the award. Now, moving on, we also had the honor of selecting a Put Your Best Face Forward business for the month, and I've selected Carl's Market. Not only do they keep a tidy appearance, but for those at Carl's, they've allowed us to put a section of the bulletin board that most of you are familiar with, has been dedicated to city communications. They support Girl Scouts, any kind of fundraising activities. They're kind enough to be able to make space for folks to do that. Now that the food bank is back up and collecting donations, they've got a barrel there. So clearly, they're supportive of, that's just a few ways that they help support the community. Congratulations.
Very nice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the Jubilee Park Fitness Loop tribute. And I'm going to ask Bob Porter to say a few words of introduction.
The Jubilee Park Fitness Loop that we put in a couple of weeks ago, a month ago or so now, in our Parks Committee, we banter ideas. And this idea really was George's driving force. He had talked to people in the community and what people would use and wanted. So we took that and found the equipment and got it all installed. So we're missing a couple of pieces, but tonight we want to thank George officially and honor him with that.
And in recognition of that, Devin and Jane have prepared a proclamation. Do you have tissue? That I will read.
Bonnie, you want to help support him on the other side?
Whereas George Dunn was raised in the Perry area and graduated from Perry High School in 1956. And whereas George is a devoted husband to his beloved wife Bonnie of 63 years, proud father of four children, grandfather of 13, and great-grandfather of 17. And whereas George is always a positive and dedicated community participant. For instance, his active status to the Boy Scouts of America from 1971 until 2015, and longtime member of the Perry United Methodist Church. And whereas George Dunn again showed his community participation by volunteering to parks planning since its inception and by accepting to be a citizen member of the Parks and Recreation Committee under the appointment of Mayor Steve Daunt on the fourth day of November 2003. And whereas George has continued to devote his time to the Parks and Recreation Committee under Mayor Ross Delu, Mayor James Hugula, and current Mayor Susan Hammond for now more than 18 years.
Wow.
And whereas George has participated in planning for the current exercise loop at the city Jubilee Park and also will be contributing a compass course and GPS course to be utilized by the community. And whereas the city of Perry, by this proclamation, wishes to express its great appreciation to George Dunn by officially designating the exercise loop as the George Dunn Fitness Loop. And now therefore, it is resolved that I, Mayor Susan J. Hammond, and on behalf of the Perry City Council proclaim from this day forward that the exercise loop at Jubilee Park is to be known as George Dunn Fitness Loop. And be it further resolved, the city of Perry does hereby commend George Dunn for his years of volunteer service and expresses our sincere thanks on behalf of the city of Perry community.
We're not going to look at you yet.
I want to have a picture with you.
After we're done a picture with that, I would like the family that came up to.
We're ready. Smile.
George, are you really smiling?
Okay, family, come on. Stay right there.
Can you not do that? Don't leave. We got a couple of cameras going on, okay? Okay, is anybody really happy? No blinking, and I want a big smile. One, two, three. Congratulations, George. You deserve this. Thank you, family.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
We'll now move into public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to make public comment at this time?
Sorry.
It's okay. Anybody for public comment tonight?
Yes, me.
Okay, come right up. Give us your name, your address.
My address?
If you want to be in the minutes. If you don't care, then you're not needed.
My name is Juanita Webb. Two B's. I got some. First of all, I want to say Jubilee Park looks pretty good. Seeing it was really raggy and it's looking great. I thought that was really cool, the pull-up bars. I don't know what the heck the cellar thing is. It's like some goofy dip thing. I can't figure it out, but. Needs like a manual structure for a guy like me, I guess, sometimes and certain things. Anyways, moving on. I got some suggestions. I'm hoping you guys take it in consideration. I think you guys should put a dog park in. Like, there's a lot of dogs around here and you should put the dog park probably on the realtor checks. But anyway, probably Jubilee Park. They park a lot. Anyway. Then I was going to say a drive-in, but with the gas prices for our almighty superior intellectual leaders, that's probably Republican, Democratic, who cares? It's just, never mind. Anyway. And then third, dispensary. We've got to grow up. I mean, I'm just going to put my humble opinion out there. I don't think it's a crime to smoke a little marijuana and watch Ren and Stimpy, you know, on some downtime. Can't categorize me with other people that do it, don't do jack squat with their wife and just sit around and do nothing. Not like that.
Is that it?
Huh?
Is that all?
Yep.
Okay, let me just, Larry, if you could respond to his comment on marijuana.
We do have approved a medical marijuana dispensary for the city of Perry.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, we are accepting applications for the month of June. And we will be selecting a candidate from that, those applications here during the month of July. And then it's a matter of them getting through all of the business legalities, not only with the city, but with the state. But we have agreed to and are supporting a single medical marijuana dispensary that will be coming to the city of Perry.
Thank you, Larry. And I'll let Bob just address the idea for a dog park.
Dog park is on our, it's all by ideas for the Parks Committee. And we have a Facebook page for the Parks Committee and also the community page. There's lots of ideas. We're going to do different things, but it's where the funds are limited, so we're trying to be, use those as best efficient as possible.
Open the moon spa back up. I could turn page in that, or dare you. Anyway.
The Parks Committee meets the last.
Last Tuesday of every month, every other month, but we're suspended until September.
And then you play here. So if you're interested in working on the Parks Committee.
Talk to us at the committee and be part of it.
Last Tuesday of every month.
Last Tuesday, every month, every other month, but we won't have another meeting until September.
Okay, I got one other question. Are you guys, did you guys figure out what we're going to do with the leaves, man?
We haven't.
The leaves? So I can, the leaves get vacuumed up?
Is it a state thing?
There's a calendar on the city website. If you go to the city website, you can find the calendar and it shows when they vacuum it up, like what times of the year.
What happened to burning them though?
Well, that's been banned for a while, but the reason we don't vacuum them up like they used to, the equipment's very, very expensive and it's old. So we're trying to make that equipment last as long as possible. So to be efficient to all taxpayers' money, it's cheaper for the city to have you bag it and we'll pick up the bags. During the summer months, we do vacuum the leaves in the fall and the spring. And then we still do the chipping of the brush. But you can't put more than a pickup truck load approximately out in front of your house to brush at one time. What is it? Once a week or every other week?
Is this a city thing or is this a state thing why we can't burn the leaves? Because I remember me and my brother, like burning the leaves and we'd just like ride our bikes through it, cook hot dogs, eat hot dogs, marshmallows. Even the neighbors were like, you know.
It's a city thing.
It's a city thing. So a couple of people cried to their mommy about some, something with the burning of the leaves. And all of a sudden, everybody got to stop doing what they're doing and cater towards a couple of people who just want attention there lonely.
There's lots of issues with burning leaves. And it's not the smoke. It's, you know, it could cause a house fire. You could cause this. There's lots of things.
That would never happen. That will never happen.
I've seen it. So, but anyways.
Not only.
Oh, so you want people's houses?
Not only, not only does the city pick them up, but you can also drop them off yourself if you'd like, if you have the means. At DBW, they made that available so that they can be dropped off.
So is this ever going to be like back to where it was actually legitimate, common sense, where we could at least burn the dog on leaves? But that's never going to happen.
You're never going to have available.
Never going to happen, really. Very interesting.
Any other comments?
No, ma'am.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for hearing me out. Thanks.
Anyone else here for a public comment? Then we will move on to communications. Devin? No communications for tonight. I do not have a report for tonight. Do we have committee reports for tonight?
Just give a quick ordinance committee update. We, as I mentioned before, we're looking at our ORB ordinance. And at our last meeting, we have agreed to draft a resolution that will be forthcoming for golf cart usage within the city that will be coming before council once it gets passed, our city attorney. And then likewise, with an ORB ordinance for the city that will be forthcoming as well. Our next meeting, I didn't, I had the date right in front of me, but it got posted on our website. Will be out in about mid-July. And obviously, everybody is welcome and would like to attend. That will be at 10 o'clock here in council. I just don't remember the exact date. The 14th. The 14th.
14th.
The Thursday, July the 14th. Thank you. That's it.
Any other committees for a report? Hearing none, we'll move to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
Motion from Steve, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to old business, then the Nitro program. Devin provided more information, and she is here to answer any questions that you might have about that.
I was able to go online. I got about 10 different programs. They all do similar. The more higher ranked and comparables are either the same price or fairly lower. I'm asking to stay with Nitro due to that. I didn't find anything that gave us more. And I'm talking to not just I that use it, other employees. They were like, if it's not broken, we understand how it works. We really don't want to have to jump on it. So we were very happy with it. But I thank you for slowing us down and giving that opportunity to look out there. Adobe is probably the exact comparable. And it was actually the same, 179, but we're getting a discount because we're getting multiple ones, so.
I was the one that raised it, and I'm, with some conversation I had with Devin outside of here, I'm perfectly fine with that selection, but it is, all I want to do with due diligence, we did look to see if there was anything better. It's a good idea. Good time to do it. I move that we authorize the purchase of Nitro program for the amount not to exceed $540. Second.
I have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob, to authorize purchase of the Nitro program for an amount not to exceed $540. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, we just need to have a discussion regarding the fire chief's letter because I would like to respond to him in writing. We talked a little bit about it last week, but we were thinking we were going to get some more information or something that might affect this, so open for discussion.
I think we were anticipating whether or not there were any other units, townships or municipalities that were going to come forward with that position. But now, my position hasn't changed because we just don't have the funds to support that. His request.
Does somebody want to just make that into some kind of a motion, a general response, and I'll respond with a letter?
I move that we respectfully decline the request by the fire chief to take any of the city's ARPA funds to support the needs of the SESA activity in the specifics. Or the reason I stated.
Can I have a second for them? Motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And I'll get a letter put together to that effect. Moving into new business, Megan, you're up.
Hello. You all have a packet in front of you, fourth quarter budget amendments. Behind the first page, you'll see city's budget as of 6/15 per audit or state audit laws. Any fourth quarter amendments have to be completed before the close of the year. So we can't wait and see what things look like on June 30th. I have to take my best guess at what's going to happen in the next two weeks and make amendments accordingly. It's my understanding that the general fund budget is approved at the activity level and all other funds are approved at the fund level. So the amendments I'm requesting tonight are all in general, and it's simply moving funds between departments. Most of our departments are well under budget this year. A couple of them are over budget. The bigger ones to point out that are over budget is obviously contracted out brush chipping. We are setting aside funds that were going to be moved to motor pool. I've got my best guess of how much the total will be for brush chipping come the end of the month. So we're going to move, or I'm requesting move $6,760 from equipment rent to motor pool up to contracted services. That's the biggest change. The others are just kind of some housekeeping fund changes. Act 45, 425 agreement, those are the funds that we pay Perry Township for the parcels that are in the city that used to be budgeted under miscellaneous expenses in the same department. However, we've had many other miscellaneous expenses this year that have absorbed that budget already. So before the previous treasurer left, we had already determined that that should be its own line item. We can track it better going forward. So this is just kind of setting up that budget. When we look back, we'll be able to track the history better. Other items that are getting expenses moved around are salaries from the clerk line. That's just a change in staffing from when the budget was set to what was actually hired in the year we're in now. I have no concerns for any of the other funds. I think everything is looking pretty good compared to what was budgeted. A lot of projects were budgeted to only happen if we received grant funds as far as the roads are concerned. Grant funds weren't received, projects didn't happen. Those funds will be well under budget. It looks like we're anticipating about another $30,000 revenue to the general fund from state shared revenues that haven't come in yet. They usually hit for June and July. So that is still '21, '22 money. So we are looking quite well. Once we make these adjustments, I think we'll be in line with my requirements come autumn.
Questions for Megan or comments or discussion?
I move that we approve following fourth quarter voided amendments in comparison as presented by the treasurer.
Second.
Motion from Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion slash approval of grant consulting agreement. This is an adjustment to the contract that we originally signed with Grantsmanship Consulting. The city's kind of dead in the water as far as getting grants because we don't have matching funds. We should be able to apply for more grants once our, what's that called, the five-year plan?
Master plan.
Master plan is done and brought up to speed. Megan and I have attended a webinar that is concerning. Megan, help me.
Capital asset.
Capital asset management. And that goes along with the master plan. And once we have that in place, working on it at the same time, that will also improve our chances for being able to obtain grants. So as opposed to paying a contract amount of money on a regular basis to Grantsmanship, the revised contract is simply on a basis of when we need them, he will be available. We won't pay him a standard contract every month. I did talk to him on the phone yesterday again. He is going to continue to send us the newsletter that he's been sending to tell us about things that are available, recognizing that something might pop up, you know, a small grant here or there that might be helpful. But that's what this is in a nutshell. It's a change, reducing the amount of money that we'll pay until we can be more available to actually apply for grants. Any questions and discussion on that new contract?
I assume he's okay to operate under that per hour new arrangement.
He's absolutely fine with it. He understands the reason behind it and said, yeah, I absolutely am fine with that. And he provided the new contract. It was his draft.
I move that we approve the Grant Consulting Services Agreement from Grantsmanship Consulting LLC at an hourly rate of $75 per hour, term beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, or upon 30 days written notice by either party. And also authorize the mayor to sign said proposed agreement.
Second.
Was that Steve I heard over there? Moved by Mike and seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And I will tell you too, Megan and I did meet with the consultant that was recommended by SEEP. We met with her by Zoom. Gave her a lot of information about what we were hoping to get in grants and what we had tried to do, what we had available and don't have available. And she did give us back a report that said, you're pretty. available, and she did give us back a report that said, you're pretty much dead in the water till you get your five-year agreement done, um, and to have some money to put up for matching funds. Um, and the other part of that was, and I was just a little surprised, although Megan wasn't, so I'm more naive, I guess, that I thought S E D P indicated that we'd be able to utilize a grant writer through them, and, um, the evaluation was free through S E D P, but if we did want to avail ourselves of her services, we would have to enter into a contract just like we had with James, so, just to let you know that. Any questions about that? Okay. We can move on to discussion regarding SMS slash text messages to residents. And this is concerning text my gov, I think Devin provided that information to everybody. If-
There was two.
Like two?
So there's the IRIS that John was given, um, had a sales rep reach out to him. Um, I don't have a motion or would expect any kind of decision, uh, because John's not here. I can only interpret what I've read on the IRI, our IRIS is that it seems to be what we already are being offered through the county. It's just the emergency, although, and we'd be game for it, um, but maybe John knows more than I do. Um, I have heard John say that he would like to communicate over and beyond just, um, that there is an emergency on his end, and this text my gov, this is something that I brought to the city over a year ago, I'd have to get rushed up on it, but John's, um, for example, it would resource of, there's a water break in at Seven Sush, so people would get notified, um, water, um, hydrants are gonna be flowing in, flushed at this certain date, um, or just even event, um, it also has the opportunity for the residents to communicate back. If I recall from the meeting that I had is that there would be an automated, automated response to them, that doesn't mean that whatever department they're trying to know what's going on, you know, it's not an emergency line, it's, it's not for them to communicate, you know, it would be something that, um, but it would be a reason, it'd be another thing that could be tracked, you know, um, just like how we watch Facebook, and people comment, something like that. Um, I do think that part, when I mentioned to John, makes him nervous, he thinks that that would make him responsible as these texts would be coming in, but I don't think that's what it is. But again, I just bring the material to you, I don't know if it would be something that to bring John in, and then maybe this go to a committee to consider on the details of it. Um, I don't know if council want to go anywhere farther than, um, what we, we have, which is the Ray, the nine-one-one at this time, um, but again, I would like John to put some two cents into this, too.
Yeah, the text my gov, to recall back to your comments, Devin, we did at that time, is the Business Affairs and Technology Committee, we did look at the text my gov, and at least at that point in time, didn't get John's input, but we took the tap that that it was probably not an appropriate time to spend the dollars for the system, but I'd be more unwilling to, among my other technology and communications committee, revisit it, and maybe get John, call, call our committee together, and have John come in and share his thoughts with us and develop a recommendation. I just also noticed the possibility.
When we had the, um, need to let everybody know about the boil water advisory, um, I did, after that, send out an email to department heads, and just said, if you know of any tool that we can use, um, you know, let's hear about it, so we can look at everything, and of course, Kyle brought back the smart nine-one-one, John sent this, um, IRIS, and Devin brought back the text my gov, so, um, we can certainly discuss any questions anybody's gotten, and, um, my thought would be, though, that we do refer further investigation into these options to the technology committee for further investigation and report back. Any other questions or comments about that?
That's right, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. That now is in your court, above all is in your court, as they say. If you do think of anything you'd like them to look at, feel free just to communicate that right to Larry. Moving on then to passable approval of utility billing audit, and that is the paper that says Ferguson at the top. We're gonna let Devin have the floor here.
During, during our transition, learning the S and A with the utility billing, um, getting your customers, um, up and going with the new builds specifically, um, there's some data in, in the program that was giving, um, Megan and Shirley some difficulty in knowing whether it was, they were truly doing the right thing, because we use Neptune for the meter side, which gets imported into our B S and A program that does the billing, so there's two programs that work together. Ferguson is, is our meters. So, we're able to track down our local gentleman to come in, um, took some time with Megan and Shirley, physically showing in the meters, explaining how the dials work and all that kind of stuff, it was a great meeting. And then he called his hire up, brought him on, in on speaker, and he was very comfortable on the techie side for the B S and A, so they opened up the B S and A program, he was able to get into the screen and kind of overview on some things. What he had learned is, is there is, um, some cleanup that needs to be done, and he said the best way to do that, his recommendation is, is to do, it's called a billing, um, audit proposal, because there are some of the meters that, um, might not be in the correct, um, there's a dial, and then there is a multiplier of how they work, and so, once this audit is done, we can get a lot of cleanup done, and, so this proposal is in front of you, and I highly recommend it for them to move forward with the cleanup, and then, um, Ferguson will put the tools in for the meters, so that when they are signing up new accounts, that, the, the stuff will be right, and it'll be explained to them to move forward.
It appeared that we had some best guess going on in relation to some of the way the, the meters were being set, and that's what we really would like to correct, so that it's consistent across the board and, um, being done properly.
Is this just a software calibration, or is this an actual meter calibration? Do you know?
Uh, what, what they'll do is, is they're, they're gonna actually have spreadsheets, and then they will show us of what, which ones will need to be fixed and corrected.
Okay. So they'll, they'll, they'll tell them, oh, this one's way off, or way under, or whatever.
They're gonna pull the information off of the S and A, and then do their magic, and get us a report on it, is my understanding. Would you agree, Megan?
Yeah, I would say software. They're not concerned that the meter isn't reading correctly, they're concerned that when it's imported into the S and A, it's not being calculated-
Calculated correctly.
-as far as dollars on the bill correctly.
Okay, so the meters metering correctly-
Yeah, and is it-
It's just not getting transferred or translated into dollars correctly?
Yeah, it's verifying that we're entering and billing what is read, not maybe what is read, then multiply, or what is read, and then reduce.
Okay.
So.
So software is the answer to your question?
It's more about consistency.
Yep.
And this will be paid out of the water block, correct?
Yes.
Megan, is there sufficient funds in the water fund to cover that thirteen hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we approve the proposal to freeze some water works for court, uh, excuse me, regarding any utility bill audit for a amount not to exceed thirteen hundred dollars.
Second. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad, all those in favor of that motion, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Any other business that needs to come before council at this time? Anyone who has decided they now wanna make public comment? You're up, if you do. Agenda items for our next meeting. Larry, you can just let us know when your committee has completed their investigation into those options.
Right.
We won't put you on the agenda till you tell us.
Yeah, I'll get it. Meeting scheduled, description, analysis, and hopefully by one from now, maybe our second meeting, we'll be able to come back with something.
All right. Um, I will maybe just ask Devin to, um, let you know what she's learned from our attorney, um, concerning the items that are on his to-do list, and, uh, she's had communication with him about those things.
Uh, so, there are several things that, that council's been in the works. Uh, we have, uh, proposals that, uh, I have communicated to the city attorney that I would like council to have at least two meetings to approve those proposals, which is Parks, the Queen House, the property fifty-two to be considered to sell, and the charter amendments. Um, so those four proposals need to be at my desk on August sixteenth by four P M. So I've reminded him of those dates, and then there's also the, um-
Nuisance abatement?
Nuisance abatement ordinance that is in front of him to review. Uh, so that is a lot, a lot of work. Now, we've done most of the work for him, so he's, um, should be just picking through it, but the three ballot proposals, we didn't give him any kind of wording on it, so he would have to work it on that. Um, just to let you know, the, um, our city attorney has lost one of his legals that has helped him keep up, so I respectfully said, I understand that, you know, you're kind of swamped right now, but, you know, can we have a, a timeline? Um, mayor asked me to word it that way, and he's committing to us, um, this coming Monday and Tuesday, he's quite confident that we can get everything in the works, so I'm assuming that at the meeting in July, you will probably be able to see the proposals, um, to at least have discussion, you'll still have time. Um, I've counted me at three council meetings before, it has to be at my desk on those proposals, so.
Any questions about that? Okay, very good. Any other comments? Meeting's adjourned, seven forty-two.